I'd like to ask everyone to please take their seat and remind everyone to turn their cell phones on silent or turn them off. We have a lengthy agenda for this, will be the third meeting of the Pike County Fiscal Court for October 2021. This is a special meeting and we will be limited to the items on the agenda. I'm not sure what order we're going to take these. So at this time, I would like to ask my cousin Claude Tackett, who is here, if he would say the invocation for us. Come up to the microphone, please. invocation.
All right. All right, let's pray. Father God, pray for your blessings over this fiscal court and the business of Pike County and pray we do all things in honor in the name of Jesus Christ, whose name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Robertson.
Here.
Commissioner Tackett.
Here.
Commissioner Booth.
Here. We have a court and we are ready to proceed and I would like to ask Mr. Frankie Stacy if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, through the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just as one.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of October 5th in October 19, 2021, meeting of the Pike County Fiscal Court. Is there a motion to a writ?
Motion.
There are motions by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Ms. Robertson.
Yes.
Ms. Robertson.
Yes. Before we get into the agenda, I would like to welcome a very special guest today. My cousin Claude Tackett is here. He is a high school football teammate of Mr. Fabian Little and myself and now practices law in Louisville after practicing several years in South Carolina. And it's always good to have another Tackett back in Kentucky and maybe someday, maybe we'll get him back here in Pike County. So it's good to have you back and I appreciate you stopping by. All right, we have a very important issue. This is number 13 on the agenda, but it's something I believe is of vital importance to public health and people of Pike County and it fills with a situation that this comparison is both inhumane and... Last week, I was contacted by Harlan County Judge Executive Dan Mosley, who happens to be president for the Kentucky Association of Counties. Dan is a good friend to everybody in this court, even though we're in different political circles. He is highly respected. He's the former president of County Judge Executive Association and has been elected by all the county officials in Kentucky as president of CAECO. It's a pretty big honor. Now, he called me and advised me that a Pike County resident had passed away on October 7th at Harlan ARH and that the body had been unclaimed. As a result, they reached out to Pike County Coroner Russell Roberts, who declined to provide any assistance. Now, let me explain this to you. Under the law, there's no statute that says that a coroner has to take possession of a body. Here's what the law says. This is KRS 72.450. The only mechanism under Kentucky law for disposing of an unclaimed human remains is for the coroner to take possession and to arrange for burial at the fiscal court's expense. It's not the first time that this court has paid for burials in the past. This is not something that is new. They contacted Mr. Roberts multiple times and he did not offer any assistance. He told Phyllis Wilson, who is the Community Regulatory Affairs Officer at Harlan ARH, that it was the responsibility of the county where the individual passed away. Mr. Keen and myself did some legal research on this after we had been contacted by Judge Mosley. And I'll read you Judge Mosley's letter that he sent in follow-up of our conversation. Miss, he told, Mr. Roberts told Ms. Wilson that basically it wasn't his responsibility. The problem with that is the hospital over there has no ability to dispose of the remains. The county judge doesn't have the legal authority, the sheriff doesn't. So now you have a situation where a Pike County resident has passed away and the Pike County coroner won't claim the remains. But here's what happened. The University of Kentucky Medical Center filed two declaratory rights actions in 2015 where a situation happened where an individual in Pulaski County had been transferred into the Kentucky Medical Center, passed away. And the action was brought because both the Fayette County coroner and the Pulaski County coroner declined to take possession of the remains and arrange for disposal. Fayette Circuit Judge Tom Clark issued an order that compelled the Pulaski County coroner, the county of residence of the deceased individual to take possession, arrange for burial at the fiscal court in Pulaski County's expense. Similar case was filed by UK and an agreed order was entered where the county of the deceased individual agreed to take the remains. Toby Goss, who...
(Inaudible) I write to you today to ask for your assistance in resolving this ARH dispute between Harlan ARH Hospital and the Pike County coroner, the guardian justice in the case of the individual, Mr. so-and-so, who passed away on October 7th, 2021, at Harlan ARH Hospital. At the time of his death, the individual... Since his death, Mr. (inaudible) individual's remains have been held in the morgue at Harlan ARH awaiting transport back to Pike County for funeral and/or burial. Representatives of Harlan ARH have contacted the Pike County coroner to make arrangements to transport the individual's remains back to Pike County for burial, but the coroner said that it was not his responsibility. It is my understanding that it is customary in Kentucky for the remains of an individual person to be returned to the county of residence. In Harlan County, we have had several instances where the Harlan County coroner has made arrangements to return individual persons' remains back to Harlan County from hospitals, lakes, and hazards in Pike. Any assistance you can provide in resolving this matter would be greatly appreciated. Subsequently, Phyllis Wilson contacted our office here at the courthouse. She spoke to Jeannie about this and I actually had a conversation with her this morning about this. She indicated to me that Mr. Roberts was both rude and belligerent to her during these conversations. Now, I wrote a letter that was hand-delivered to Mr. Roberts on October 27th. But before I get into the letter and the subsequent events, it also has come to my attention from conversations with individuals employed at Pikeville Medical Center, including
Yeah. The folks at Harlan County, it's the responsibility of the county where the person died. In Pikeville Medical Center, he tells them since the two individuals are not from Pike County, it's not his responsibility. Well, as I said earlier, the law only allows the coroner to dispose of unclaimed remains. And you know, in our country, even death row inmates who are executed are provided with a dignified burial in accordance with their religious beliefs. It's sad enough that these individuals have passed away and no one cared enough or was available to claim the remains. But now we have a county official that is not only in Pike County, but in Harlan County, refusing to step up and to assist. Now, last week, Ms. Porter advised me that the chief nursing officer had contacted Mr. Roberts, the house managers have contacted Mr. Roberts, and she contacted Mr. Roberts. And each time, he refused to help. Now, let me, let me be very clear. Pikeville Medical Center is the largest employer in eastern Kentucky. They employ over 3,000 people. Tug Valley ARH, ARH has a large presence in Pike County. Tug Valley ARH employs over 500 individuals. And for a Pike County government official to essentially refuse to provide any assistance when it is his responsibility to help is unconscionable and it's really shocking, for lack of a better word. It's shocking. Now, Ms. Rainey, last week, Michelle Rainey, who is the chief nursing officer, contacted Mr. Roberts and basically indicated that the hospital would pay for the funerals of these two individuals if Mr. Roberts would step up and take possession of the remains. First of all, it's not the hospital's responsibility. It's responsibility for the coroner to pick them up and the fiscal court's responsibility to pay for the burials. We are willing to do that. Now, in addition, if you hand me the, I'll just basically read you the information that we received this... Essentially, there are issues that are presented for hospitals when you have remains that are left in an unembalmed condition in a morgue for extended periods of time. Bodies are still decomposing and as Mr. Blackburn indicated to Mr. Keen, it is a public health issue and potentially could have impacted the accreditation if a hospital inspection was done. It is immoral and unethical to allow a deceased human remains to stay in a morgue for three months or two months. Now, I sent a letter that I'm going to read and I'll provide a copy of this to Mr. Sloan. Last week, I was contacted by Harlan County Judge Executive Dan Mosley regarding the remains of a Pike County resident who passed away on October 7th, 2021, at Harlan ARH Hospital. Gary, I'd ask you to redact any few, this is, if you decide to use this to redact the individual's name out. As of this date, the remains have not been claimed by any family member. Judge Mosley advised me that you have been contacted by the administration of Harlan ARH regarding this situation and that you refuse to take possession of the body and to arrange for a dignified burial. Subsequent to Judge Mosley's call to my office, he sent a letter to me requesting my assistance to help resolve the dispute between your office and Harlan ARH Hospital. I have enclosed a copy of Judge Mosley's letter for your review. After receiving Judge Mosley's letter, I contacted the county attorney's office and asked the issue be researched. KRS 72.450, which pertains to the disposal of an unclaimed body, states that the coroner shall arrange for burial at the county's expense. Similar issue came up in Fayette County in 2015 when a Pulaski County resident passed away at the University of Kentucky Medical Center and the remains were not claimed by the next of kin. University of Kentucky petitioned the Fayette Circuit Court to resolve the matter when both the Pulaski County coroner, Fayette County coroner refused to take possession of the unclaimed remains. Fayette Circuit Court ordered the Pulaski County coroner to take possession of the remains as the decedent was a resident of Pulaski County at the time of his death. Another case filed by the general counsel for the University of Kentucky produced the same result with the coroner and the deceased's home county taking possession of the unclaimed remains. Since this issue has not been addressed by Kentucky's appellate courts, the Fayette Circuit Court decision would establish clear precedence for the Pike County coroner to take possession of the remains in Harlan County and to arrange for burial. Situation that led to litigation in Fayette County is identical to the situation involving the remains in Harlan County. Your office has failed to take possession of the remains, even though he is a Pike County resident and has been deceased since October 7th, 2021. It is inconscionable to me that you have failed to assist Harlan ARH with the disposal of the remains. Therefore, I'm requesting that you immediately take possession of the remains and arrange for a dignified burial in accordance with his religious beliefs. As you are well aware, KRS 72.450 requires the fiscal court to pay for the burial and the Pike County Fiscal Court stands ready to honor its obligations to do so. Yesterday, Judge Mosley contacted me yet again over this matter and my office was also contacted by Phyllis Wilson of Harlan ARH requesting my assistance in resolving the dispute between your office and Harlan ARH. I should remind you that ARH has a significant presence in Pike County and is one of the largest employers in the county. Lack of cooperation from your office certainly undermines the trust that ARH has in Pike County government. My office has also been contacted by representatives of Pikeville Medical Center regarding the disposal of unclaimed remains. It came to my attention that there are two deceased individuals whose remains have been in the morgue at PMC for a substantial amount of time. The deceased person with the initials HB passed away on July 23rd, 2021 and was a resident of Floyd County, Kentucky. The other decedent with the initials TM passed away on September 16th, 2021 and was a resident of Del Bar in West Virginia. Yesterday, I spoke with the Assistant Vice President of Patient Services at PMC. She told me that you have been contacted approximately five times about this situation by the house managers or chief nursing officer in her cell. Each time, you declined to assist with the proper disposal of the remains. I'm requesting that you immediately contact the Floyd County coroner and request the Floyd County coroner to take possession of the remains of deceased patient HB. Second, I would request that you contact the appropriate officials of Mingo County and request that they take possession of the remains of TM. Officials of Mingo County refused to do so, so that you will need to arrange for burial as PMC has no authority to dispose of the remains. It is simply not acceptable that you would allow the remains of two people to stay in the morgue at Pikeville Medical Center for months without offering any assistance in the lawful disposal of the remains. I look forward to your prompt action to remedy these issues as the deceased deserves a dignified burial and the hospitals need assistance with the disposal of the unclaimed remains. Now, first of all, neither, neither Harlan ARH nor Pikeville Medical Center should have to resort to any type of legal action to have the Pike County coroner assist in this matter. Second, a Pike Circuit Court, even if the Pikeville Medical Center's general counsel brought an action on this, a Pike Circuit Court order cannot compel a West Virginia coroner's office to take possession of the remains. And as I've discussed with the Associate Vice President, it would be for the Pike County coroner to take possession in the fiscal court to pay for burial. Now, after receiving this letter, I received a return phone call from Mr. Roberts. I was out, I called him back in the presence of both Commissioner Jason Tackett and Commissioner and Deputy Judge Reggie Higgin. We were over at Belfry taking care of some county business. We had gone over and looked at some, met with a company that's looking to invest on the trail system. I spent about 12 minutes on the phone with Mr. Roberts. At first, and like I said, there's two witnesses and there's a recording of the conversation. First, he tried to say that it's not his responsibility to pick up the remains of the individual because he was trained and it's the county where the person passes away that is responsible for disposal of the remains. But then I said, what about the two individuals that passed away at Pikeville Medical Center that have been there, one for over three months? Over three months in an unembalmed condition? Simply put, he's not willing to do his job. And when the chief executive officer of Pikeville Medical Center has to reach out and ask for assistance, it's disgraceful. Last night, when I spoke with Mr., with Judge Mosley and advised him that I had been in contact with the coroner's office, here's what I told him. If Mr. Roberts does not fulfill his responsibility, then I would bring it before the Pike Fiscal Court, let the Harlan County coroner take possession and send us a bill for a reasonable cost to dispose of the remains. When I spoke to Ms. Wilson this morning, she had said that she spoke with Mr. Roberts, that he was nice in the last conversation, of course, after receiving my letter and my conversation with him, and that he would be over next week to pick the remains up. I'm not sure what he has planned today or tomorrow. Said to be over next week. So, when I had this conversation and Mr. Tackett and Judge Higgin were both present, I asked him if he had reached out over the unclaimed Floyd County resident who had been in the hospital since July 23rd in the morgue. He said, yes, I contacted Floyd County coroner, Greg Nelson. When did you call him? Well, I called him today. That was Wednesday after he received my letter. Well, that night, Wednesday night, I reached out to Robbie Williams, who is the Floyd County Judge Executive, who's a friend of mine. Have a great relationship with him. We work closely on a lot of issues. Robbie, I explained the situation. He says, look, we have three hospitals in Floyd County. We deal with this all the time. He said, I said, could you have Greg Nelson, the coroner, to call me? 30 minutes, 45 minutes later, Greg calls me. Says, not a problem, will arrange for burial. So Floyd County has not picked up the remains yet, but they are working on it with Pikeville Medical Center. Obviously, they've got to secure a place to bury the individual and move forward with the proper paperwork to do so. This is an appalling situation and it's not something that as county judge executive that I'm going to sit back and allow to happen. It's also not my responsibility nor the responsibility of fiscal court to do the coroner's job for him. Now, you can't have it both ways. You can't not say, I'm not going to help Pikeville because they're not from Pike County and then tell Harlan County, you're not going to help them because the person died in Harlan County, even though they're a Pike County resident. There's no excuse for this. And I'm sure that Ms. Porter and Ms. Wilson will verify what I've told you. I have text messages that will back up the son. Last night, when I contacted Judge Mosley and told him that I had contacted our coroner and if he wouldn't do, fulfill his responsibilities, that the fiscal court, I would bring it before then to the court to help pay for the cost of the burial of this Pike County resident. His words for me, to me, were, this is malfeasance and I agree with him. This is a complete and total dereliction of duty by the Pike County coroner. In fact, when I had the conversation with him, he said, where are we going to bury these people? I said, well, I will work on that, but you know, that's not my job either. That's his job. That's why he's provided with salary and benefits. That's why he drives around in a county vehicle all over the county when none of the rest of us have a county vehicle. This is a complete dereliction of duty. And here's another problem. There are two morgues in Pike County. The Pike County coroner does not have a morgue. The fiscal court does not have a morgue facility. The Pike County coroner's office for years have, as a courtesy, been allowed to use the morgue at Pikeville Medical Center. They have been allowed to use at times the morgue at Tug Valley ARH. Let me tell you what happens. If this continues and Pikeville Medical Center says that the coroner can no longer use that morgue facility if there's an auto accident, a plane crash, a drowning, not someone that died in the hospital. For decades, the coroner has had access to Pikeville Medical Center's morgue. All it takes is for Mr. Blackburn to say, we're no longer going to let the coroner use Pike County's morgue. That falls back on the fiscal court to have to pay to buy property and construct a morgue. And I'm not sure what kind of inspections and health department or public health issues that that would entail. But all it takes is Pikeville Medical Center or Tug Valley to say, you're not using their morgue anymore. Now, I think that the public is going to find this as shocking as I do, that anyone would allow a human remains to go unburied for three months in an unembalmed condition when the hospital staff is begging for assistance. And we have no power. In that conversation, Mr. Roberts said, well, the fiscal court can get a funeral home to go pick it up and pay for the cost of burial. As county judge, I don't have authority. And again, I've got a conver, that conversation was recorded. I wanted to know what happened here and we have that conversation recorded for the purpose of establishing what the issues were. And he had said, well, the fiscal court can pick that body up. The fiscal court has no authority to pick up a human remains or to arrange for disposal. Only the coroner, that is a constitutional officer, can do that. Now, I'm going to ask Mr. Keen, as county attorney, what our options are to deal with this if our coroner does not fulfill his legal obligations. But I am insisting and demanding that this be addressed immediately because of the risk that it poses to the staff and the employees at Pikeville Medical Center, the risk that it potentially imposes on their accreditation, and simply from the inhumane treatment that these individuals, these remains have received. Three months is too long to arrange for pickup and burial. Two months is too long and three weeks is too long. His excuse to me was that he's been trying to find, been trying to locate the next of kin for three months? Maybe he can tell us what he's tried to do because when I talked to Greg Nelson, and I'm sure Mr. Nelson will tell you this, Pike County coroner Russell Roberts didn't even reach out to Greg Nelson until I sent him this letter. It's inexcusable. And I'm going to look at what options we have for impacting the operation of the coroner's office if there is a dereliction of duty. I did reach out to Deputy Coroner Kevin Hall and I have asked Kevin to help me secure burial locations and Kevin has arranged to have two burial plots to bury the two individuals, the one from Mingo County and the one from Pike County, as we are of the understanding that Floyd County is going to be responsible for the burial of the individual who passed away back in July. You know, the hospital basically told me, we just want help. We didn't know what to do in this situation. We just asked for help and they didn't get it. Now, another issue that's come up is in the past, there's an issue about whether the statute allows for cremation. There's an Attorney General's opinion, Attorney General's opinion 90, I'm sorry, 93-69, does not allow for cremation of unclaimed remains unless, under a separate statute, the next of kin consents. It's come to my attention, though, that at least one deputy coroner arranged for a cremation and that cremation was done at a funeral home where he is employed. And that would be, in my opinion, a violation of the county's ethics code. So at this time, I'm asking Mr. Greg Fannin, the county's procurement officer, to prepare a bid to be put out immediately for the cost to be sent to all the local funeral homes and any published as required by law to specify the cost of pickup. I might want to write this down, Greg. The cost to pick up the unclaimed remains, provide an appropriate burial casket, steel outer burial container, to pay for the cost of notifying the Social Security Administration and the cost of the death certificate of the individual. In addition, when appropriate, as a separate item, to pay for the embalming. We have no option to provide, to allow for cremation because the Attorney General's opinion indicates that the statute says that only two options is the coroner can donate the body to a medical school, state medical school, or to a, or to, or to arrange for burial at the fiscal court's expense. Yeah, it's possible that when these bodies went unclaimed, that either the optometry school or medical school here in Pikeville potentially could have received a donation to use those, those remains. That wasn't even looked at. But I want to put this out for bid so that in the future, when this issue comes up, there will be a process to award the bid to the lowest bidder, regardless of who that may be. So that way, it would be fair to all the local funeral homes to have an opportunity to submit a bid on this. But it's not fair for an appointed county official to steer business to their employer employer or to their own business. You know, Commissioner Robertson is in business. He can't send business to himself from the county. I can't send business to my, to my business from the county. There are ethical and legal limitations on what can be done. And we're going to set this out in writing. So in the future, there is a bid. It's never been done before, but we're going to make sure that when there are unclaimed human remains, that there is a proper way to dispose of those remains in a dignified manner. And I'm hopeful that our coroner will address this issue. I was hopeful in our conversation Wednesday, he told me that he would have me quotes from the four funeral homes in the county that are not affiliated with the coroner's office to arrange for the disposal of these remains. Jenny, did, has he, has he delivered any bids or estimates to my office in today's Friday? So we don't know. He told us that. Judge Hickman and, and Mr. Tackett would tell you that, he said he would have those to me on Thursday. We're here on Friday, we don't. And he's telling Harlan that it's going to be next week before he can pick these remains up. Not acceptable. I don't think the public would find this acceptable. And I'm going to look at what our options are to address this situation if the coroner is not going to fulfill his legal obligations. So are there any comments or, or questions about this matter before we move on? All right. Next up, we have Pike County Health Department Executive Director Tammy Riley, who will be here to discuss National Diabetes Awareness Month and World Diabetes Days. Tammy, come on up.
There we go. Is that good? Okay. Thank, thank you for having me today. My purpose today is twofold, and I'll be brief. First is to bring awareness and outreach to the county. That November is National Diabetes Awareness Month. So I'm going to just talk for a couple of minutes about diabetes and the prevalence of diabetes in Pike County. And then if, if the court so wishes, I would, I could provide a brief COVID nineteen update and maybe discuss the vaccines if anyone has any questions. But the, the first slide that the viewers can see is, shows that there's, there's two programs that are available to Pike County residents to address diabetes that are CDC-approved programs, and I'm going to talk about them today. There's the DPP Diabetes Prevention Program and DS MES Diabetes Self-Education Management Program. So there's those two programs. I'm going to get into the specifics on those and who they're appropriate for. But individuals suffering from diabetes can call the Pike County Health Department. We refer out to CDC-approved programs, which are ample in this area. And also, there's online services. So there's, and they're at no cost to the individual. So there's no reason to not take full advantage of the CDC-approved resources for diabetes. And since November's coming up and it is Diabetes National Awareness Month, I wanted to bring the prevalence of diabetes to the court's attention. There's thirty-four point two million Americans currently suffering from diabetes, according to the CDC. And of those thirty-four point two million, about twenty percent, about one in five, do not know that they have diabetes. Now, when you look at the next slide, you'll see the prevalence of diabetes in Kentucky and Pike County. So it's between thirteen and twenty-five percent prevalence in Kentucky. Pike County's eighteen percent, which is really down from where it was in previous years, but we're still on that high end of the prevalence spectrum. So at, you know, at eighteen percent, that's almost, that's almost that one in five. At the time this data was collected, that's probably was close to ten thousand Pike County residents. That's, that's a lot of individuals suffering from diabetes and the long-term impact of diabetes. Now, that eighteen percent, that data was based on if they were ever told that they had been diagnosed, if a medical provider told the individual that they had been diagnosed with diabetes over the age of twenty. So this included type one, type two, but not gestational diabetes. And on the next slide, you can see that there's three primary types of, or three types of diabetes. Type one, which was formerly known as juvenile onset or insulin-dependent diabetes. Type two, which is, we call adult onset or non-insulin-dependent. And then there's the gestational diabetes. So when we're talking about that eighteen percent, it's type one and type two. And really what's alarming, I don't have this on the statistics, is that what my community educators and the clinics tell me and what I'm hearing from medical providers, and we have the UK Pediatric Endocrinology Group come to Pike County about once every quarter to treat pediatric diabetes population, it's that prevalent, they just bring the clinic here, is that we're seeing more pediatric patients diagnosed with type-two diabetes. So that's alarming and that goes back to obesity and some other issues with controllable factors when you look at type-two diabetes. But I, I just wanted to throw that in, that that's a little alarming that we're seeing more children diagnosed with type-two. When you typically think of type-one, you know, onset at those younger ages, which it still is. But when you think about the two programs, DPP Diabetes Prevention Program, and when you see the next slide, it's like, that is really for individuals who are what we call at high risk. Now, probably most of you have heard people say, oh, y'all, diabetes, that runs in my family. Now, if I asked you to raise your hand, probably half of you or more would say, yeah, that runs in my family. I've said it myself. Oh, y'all, diabetes, that runs in my family. That means I'm high risk. That means you're high risk, if you can say that. So the Diabetes Prevention Program is a program to help you prevent diabetes, you know, before you're diagnosed with diabetes, or if you've been told that you're prediabetic, which I was told at one time in, in my life that I was prediabetic. I've controlled that with activity, physical activity and diet. But that's what the DPP program's for. It's CDC-approved. We have several in this area. We refer out to those programs and there's online programs. Then there's the DS MES program, and that's where you get self-education management, how to control it once you've received that diagnosis, to minimize those long-term, you know, risk or impact on your body. So when should you seek DS MES programs? If you're a Pike County resident and you've been diagnosed with diabetes, reach out to us. We will connect you with the DS MES. You should receive that education once a year. You should receive it if you're changing medical providers. You should receive that education if you've had a new complication onset from your diabetes. So there's a number of reasons, but you should at least get that self-education management once a year. And it's at no cost to you as an individual. So I wanted the Pike County residents to be aware that there's ample resources available. They're at no cost to our Pike County residents. And we are one of the highest-ranked counties in the state of Kentucky at eighteen percent, when the highest ranked's at twenty-five percent. There's only a few counties ranked higher than us. So that, you know, when you look at type-two diabetes, that's a preventable disease. And even if you have received that diagnosis or been told you're prediabetic, you can turn that around. You can prevent it. You can control it. And all types of diabetes are manageable. That's what I wanted to share today for the, the diabetes. And it is National Diabetes Awareness Month, so I just wanted to make the court aware of that. And I appreciate your time allowing me to just to share a few minutes about the importance. There's a huge impact on our county with, with diabetes. Does anyone have any questions? Do you want me to go on and, and into the COVID? Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, first of all, I want to say that the court appreciates what the Health Department's done and what the Health Department has, has done for the last two years.
Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of times, the Health Department and the work that it does is overlooked. But diabetes is a major problem. And my grandfather died as a result of complications from, he ended up with a small wound on his foot, felt osteomyelitis, and at his age, the antibiotics essentially shut down his kidneys and put him into congestive heart failure. It's a vicious disease. And we want people to be aware of the fact that you, even if you're diagnosed with diabetes, you can, you can live with it if you manage it. We have seen, Kevin and I recently saw the results of someone that didn't manage their diabetes, and we saw the result in a, in a legal matter of what can happen. But whatever the fiscal court can, can, can do to help get the word out, we'll be happy to do it. But, you know, it's, when you start seeing one in five individuals in Pike County as diabetics, we do need to look at what our options are. You know, the county's had, invested a lot of money in parks and playgrounds. The one thing is, that's not available, that should have been, instead of building, you know, walking tracks that can't be used, but, you know, maybe six or seven months, years. If you live at Phelps, there's no, you know, indoor workout facility. If you live Elkhorn City, the same thing. And it's unfortunate that, you know, we only have basically the YMCA. There's obviously a few private gyms where people can get exercise and things. But hopefully, at some point, if we can get the trail system running, we can start generating some additional revenue, we can look for some programs to, to help improve the amount of exercise that people get for weight control.
When you look at the county health rankings, our, our health outcomes, we're eighty-nine, ninety at the twenty, twenty rankings, or out of one hundred and twenty counties. And, and diabetes and some other controllable factors play into that. But one of them is access to, you know, recreational facilities. So I have found, as a new public health director, that the word access tends to be key to all of our, or many, I shouldn't say all, but many of our issues, you know, access to recreational facilities. We, transportation, it's a large county. Geographically, as I know you know, you know, largest county in the state of Kentucky at seven hundred and eighty-six square miles. And, you know, just trying to access facilities and, and other, other areas of need that, you know, play into our public health rankings. So, but, but definitely access to recreational facilities is one of the areas I noticed that, that we fall really low on the, the rankings. And I, and I know that it's a beautiful county and I know almost as well as anybody, you know, the trails and the outdoor recreational, they're here, it's just developing them and the access to them, for sure.
We appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Anything else you'd like to add or any comments?
I had a couple of slides. I mean, regarding COVID, I didn't know if you wanted a COVID update.
Absolutely.
I just thought I would give you the numbers while I was here. We're, we've gone over ten thousand. If you look at the seventh slide, what you're seeing there is the heat map, that state heat map showing the counties. And it looks like over half the counties are orange or yellow. Pike County's still red, but we're really on the cusp. I believe in the next couple of weeks, we'll fall into that orange level because we are declining. But we have ten thousand seven hundred and four active, total cases, not active. Our active cases are down to about two hundred and forty, two hundred and forty-seven, but we're at a hundred and seventy-nine deceased. And out of those active cases, there's thirty pending, so that we know that those individuals have passed away, but we're waiting on confirmation from state review.
So somewhere near two hundred and ten, potentially as many as two hundred and ten fatalities from COVID.
That's correct. Yes. And the number jumped very quickly in the last, in the past month. We were around a hundred and forty-five to a hundred and fifty before October, and it's jumped to a hundred and seventy-nine with thirty more pending confirmation. So those numbers, although hospitalizations, new cases, you'll see the next graph is just showing the weekly cases. And we had a hundred and forty-nine cases, I believe it was a hundred and forty-nine. When I looked at, when I tracked those Monday to Sunday numbers that I send to you every Monday morning, so that you can see a drastic drop. So we're not in a plateau. We are continuing to decline. So that's a good thing, but that's the new cases. You know, ICU and ventilator occupancy is also finally starting to subside. But the deaths, you know, that's the last thing that we're going to see de, you know, decline, because those always occur, you know, weeks later. And then the final slide is just looking at the vaccination reach in the county. For first vaccine only, we're over sixty percent. My records show us at sixty-three point nine-four percent and forty-nine point eight for fully vaccinated. Now, the state, so that's over thirty-seven thousand Pike County's that have had at least one shot. And the state has us, their numbers are a little bit behind my numbers, but they have us at fifty-three percent fully vaccinated, seventy-three percent for those sixty-five years of age and older, whereas at the state level, they're around ninety-five percent. So we're still lagging behind where the state is, but we've made some progress. And as probably most of you know, for all three brands that are approved, either full approval or under EUVA, that's Pfizer, Moderna, and the Johnson and Johnson, all have approved boosters now. So you have a Moderna and a Pfizer booster and a Johnson and Johnson booster. And the timing of that, when you should get a booster is all a little different. Plus, the two MRNAs, Pfizer and Moderna, both have that third additional vaccine that you can get that is not a booster. It's a third additional dose to go along with your primary series.
So, so let me ask you this. Any idea of when you'll be able to start vaccinating children under twelve?
That is the FDA-approved, that there was, my understanding is a seventeen-to-one vote in the FDA's committee. Now, they have passed that on to ACIP, the Accrediting Council for Immunization Practices. They fall under the CDC's oversight. They either are meeting today or early next week, but we are expecting the outcome of their recommendations in the next week or so. And that will be for five to eleven-year-olds. And what I'm hearing FDA's reg, approval was for, that was for Pfizer. And so we'll, we'll see what ACIP says. I, I don't know what they're going to say at this point. I, I'm really curious to see how restrictive they will be for the five to eleven-year-olds.
Obviously, the numbers are going down, but fatalities are going up.
Yes.
Is it fair to say that you're starting to see younger people dying from COVID as opposed to the? I, I had a friend of mine that I talked to earlier in the week, who, who lives in a neighboring county that advised me, his nephew, who was perfectly healthy with no pre-existing problems in his late twenties, had, had passed away of COVID. Obviously, we saw the officer in Floyd County that was getting ready to be a Pikeville police officer, younger than I am. What are we seeing in terms of the age of the individuals who are succumbing to the virus?
The Delta variant shifted the graph. When you look at the numbers in a graph, you can clearly see that under the age of, you know, it went from like thirty-seven percent under the age of sixty-five with the Alpha, and, and actually, it was lower than that. It went up to like forty-six percent under the age of fifty, or sixty-five, sorry, for the unvaccinated. But what I was just looking at yesterday is, this is the really sad part, is the entire state of Kentucky, going back to, you know, as, as early as when we had a, a full vaccination capability and tracking the numbers and looking at the deaths, only nine, only nine Kentuckians that were fully vaccinated lost. And that's nine individuals that, that out of all the deaths that, that we've suffered in the state, nine of them were fully vaccinated under the age of fifty. So it just, and, and those individuals, my understanding is mostly had other severe issues and conditions that occurred, you know, as comorbidities. So it just rarely do you see a death under the age of fifty for a fully vaccinated individual.
The fact that we're only around fifty percent vaccinated still leaves a lot of potential individuals to, to contract the virus. And, you know, I'm afraid we're going to keep seeing this death toll increase.
And it could be another wave. We could have another wave, is, is what's happening because we haven't hit herd immunity. And when we don't get to herd immunity, you know, we don't know if there's going to be another wave or not. There's, I've listened to the state epidemiologists and at the national level, there's predictions that there will be another wave. The Delta wave hit Pike County about as quickly as it did the rest of the world, or in the United States anyways, in, in the state of Kentucky. So there wasn't a lag like we saw in Alpha for Pike County. We, we were slammed with it about the same time the rest of the state was hit. And there's many predictions of another wave. It could be another Delta or a variant. And I'm very concerned about that because we, we haven't reached herd immunity. Based on my numbers and, and what I'm seeing, we have not reached herd immunity. And, you know, it's a concern.
Obviously, there's a, there's a concern about whether naturally acquired immunity, if the antibodies even last for any sufficient period of time. I, I saw that a friend of mine posted that he was pretty sick. He had had it. Apparently, the antibodies didn't last.
Right. And, and we saw with Delta, you know, some individuals had, we've had people in Pike County get COVID twice, you know, reinfection. We've seen, you know, Delta spread much quicker than Alpha. That is part of the reason why Pike County was That is part of the reason why Pike County was hit the same time the rest of the state and the country. And what we're seeing in Europe is that they're having another wave currently. And I don't know if you're aware of that, but parts of Europe right now is having a significant new wave. And they're not sure if it's a variant or just Delta hitting again. Hopefully, we'll know that very soon. But at the beginning of this pandemic, what has happened is about a month later, whatever's happened in Europe, we've been hit with that. I would implore individuals, you know, if they haven't sought, you know, to seek out vaccination, if they have not, and it's, there's ample supply, your pharmacy, your local provider, the two hospitals and the health department offer vaccine, you can find any of the three in this county.
Well, we appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you.
And we just need to try to keep educating people about the importance of getting vaccinated. And do you think that the misinformation about the vaccines are one of the major reasons that we have such a low percentage of individuals getting vaccinated?
Absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, I'll post, most of you are probably aware, I post, not only do I send to the judge, executive and mayors in the county, but I post, you know, updates on COVID on our social media and our website, Pike County Health Department's website and Facebook page. And it never fails, I post those numbers in individuals, you know, that many times I'll look and they're not even from Pike County. But they get on there and they provide false information, you know, just ridiculous comments. The math doesn't add up and the, when they're trying to refute the information, that they're just basic numbers that I'm providing, that the staff and I have worked on. So it's harmful.
I mean, you know, if you had, you've had enough deaths in this, it's the equivalent of an airliner crashing in Pike County in terms of the number of deaths. And some people still just want to downplay that. When you start seeing people in their twenties and thirties passing away with this virus and they still want to pretend that it's a hoax, that's what's even more shocking. I just simply can't believe that people would listen to Facebook as opposed to public health professionals or even their own physician. I tell this story, and these guys prefer me tell it. I mean, my wife had a patient came in and she said, are you vaccinated? I said, I'm not taking it, it's got a microchip in it. Obviously, you can see through, the back, the serum is clear. She showed him a needle, a microchip's not going to go through a needle this small. And she's like, why would they want to inject one in you when you carry this around? It's, it's just, it's sad and people have died because of it. And I've got a really good friend whose husband is in ICU in Louisville, unvaccinated and appears to be doing some better, but not vaccinated. And was airlifted to Louisville and had to undergo life-saving procedures there and he's not out of the woods yet. So I just hate to see that that happen, particularly to younger individuals with a lot of years left ahead of them, simply because they're just getting absolute life fed to them for whatever purpose. I can't imagine why anyone, you know, this morning, my seven-year-old grabs his mask. I mean, if my seven-year-old doesn't think it's an inconvenience, you know, we can't get him to, you know, drink milk, but, you know, I mean.
Don't wear his mask.
Don't wear the mask. I mean, it's just not that big of an inconvenience. So anyway, we appreciate everything the Health Department's done.
I appreciate the court and your assistance, Judge. Thank you for having me and allowing me to have this time.
Anything else to, anything?
Paying me, keep up the good work.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate, I appreciate the support I receive here, thanks. My staff appreciates the support that we receive here. Thank you.
On a better note, we have a proclamation that is in honor of two people that I've known as long as I can remember, and that is Otto and Bea Newsom from Dorton. And they recently, I guess today, are celebrating their 70th wedding anniversary. And we have a proclamation, this is, "Whereas Otto Newsom and Gloria B. Polyfield Newsom were united in marriage on October 29th, 1951, Clitwood, Virginia, and are now celebrating their 70th wedding anniversary. Whereas shortly after marrying, Otto and Bea moved to Michigan to find work and remain there until they retire. Whereas this marriage has been very blessed with seven children, 24 grandchildren, 46 great-grandchildren, and three great-great-grandchildren. Otto and Bea are very fortunate to be celebrating their 70th wedding anniversary with all their children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and great-great-grandchildren. And whereas upon retirement, Otto and Bea returned to the Dorton area of Pike County and later, along with fellow believers, founded Pilgrims Prayer Church. And whereas Otto and Bea have provided a happy home life and Christian upbringing for their family, has helped them develop into good citizens and worthy adults. And whereas during a long and productive life, Otto and Bea demonstrated in countless ways their dedication to the Lord, the welfare of others, and have earned the respect and affection of people from all walks of life and all ages. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Reginald St. Pike County Judge Executive in the Pike County Fiscal Court hereby recognize the 70th wedding anniversary of Otto and Gloria B. Newsom with our greatest admiration and sincere congratulations on this happy occasion. Further be it resolved that a copy of this proclamation shall be delivered to them with our best wishes for many more years of health and happiness together." This is a remarkable couple and a remarkable accomplishment. And I would ask Commissioner Tackett if he would have a motion to adopt the proclamation?
Glad to, Judge.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Booth, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes. And it's an honor to do this. We also want to wish Otto a happy birthday today, it is his 93rd birthday. So remarkable couple and a life well lived, and we wish them many years of happiness. All right, the next one on the agenda is the approval of a lease. Jeanne, I don't know that I have that lease here in my package.
You do not have the lease, Judge, because I've not seen it. I've got the terms that you asked me to get clarified and I can give you an update.
Okay, go ahead.
There were three things, if you recall, from the lease that we had. One was the description because of the way they had the red line on the property. I talked to the city attorney on a couple occasions this past week, and he was going to talk to their engineer. And talking with our director of the senior citizens, she said the city manager was up there and was aware that that 30 feet was supposed to be added if you're facing the building to the left of the building.
That's correct.
They're supposed to get some verification from their engineers and include something along those lines. The other issues were, it said Pike County, they're going to change the language to say Pike County Physical Court. The last thing was about the parking places, they are going to allow us four parking places, which in talking with, again, the director over there, she says that she can make that work. And as to where those will be, you know, we can talk to them about that. So all the concerns that we had, it's just the city, since they were the least prepared, has to make the changes and get them to us, provided there's nothing else. It, I think the court could go ahead and approve it under those terms till we actually get to correct the copy. Now if they change anything more than those, I think we'd have to come back.
What I would recommend we do is just wait till we get it in hand. We've got a court meeting in three weeks. You know, we'll probably have to have a special court meeting week after next anyway.
The only thing in my mind is, are we under any kind of deadlines as far as getting this thing started? And that's, is outside my area.
We're not because we've got an RFP out for the addition to the, I'm not sure when, the design of the expansion to the building. I'm not sure. We do have a response, so it's going to take some time.
And I do think the city would probably want to look at the designs and have some kind of approval over it to make sure that it's, you know, goes along with what their long-term plans are, that we don't throw up something. And I don't think that's an issue because.
I told.
You got to get it approved by the zoning and people anyway, and then, but we can send it over, our plans over to the city if that's okay, once we get them back.
I've already talked to Mayor Carter yesterday and he inquired about whether, I thought we were going to approve this today, but if we don't have the final lease back, I don't want to approve something we don't have.
I haven't gotten it, I don't know.
I've not seen it come back yet.
She got it, but I have not gotten it.
So the other thing is, I want them to review the plans since they are, you know, making the building available to make sure that they're okay with the structural additions to the building. We don't want to start down that road and then the city, you know, have some concern about it. So we want to, we appreciate them working with us on that. All right, so we'll pass over that and add it to the next, to the agenda for the next meeting. It's just a matter of getting the technical changes made to the lease, and I think we'll be ready to move forward with it. All right. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of resolution in support of a FEMA Kentucky Division of Emergency Management Hazard Mitigation Grant application for DR 4595 for acquisition, demolition, and bank stabilization and the associated cost of $1,970,500. Jimmy and Eric, can you come up and just give us a brief description of this? So this is the hazard mitigation grant application totaling $1.97 million. And this will be the cemetery that's sliding off the hill on Left Fork of Island Creek. Which other projects are these? So the one at 721 Central Avenue in South Williamson, is that where the Rosie Workman? Rosie Workman, the body shop? The body shop, Stanley's Body Shop. We've talked about, and the other one is the 807, which is also where we had the embankment failure over on the, on the Tug Ford. And then Blackburn Bottom, which one is that? Which one?
Blackburn Bottom.
All right, I got you.
And the three, the three, all the central avenues right there at Rosie Workman.
So all three of those pieces of property that have.
The tanks is a break in behind them houses too.
Yeah, I mean, that's, those buildings have been there for a long time, it's just the erosion.
It's going to happen sooner or later.
Judge Shigman and I went over there and very fortunate that that could have been a bad situation. It could have, it could have been, you know, you could have had loss of life with that situation. All right, so as I understand it, this doesn't cost the county anything, this is all hazard mitigation money, is that correct?
Yes, it's 75% federal, 12% from the state, the 13% is local, but those will be contributions back from the property owners back to pay for the county's 13%. So no, the county will not be out any money.
Razors, contractors, everybody donates their 13% back.
All right, is there a motion to adopt a resolution in support of FEMA hazard mitigation application for DR 4595 as previously stated? Motion. Motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any questions, discussions? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes. Yes. All right, the next one is adoption of resolution, Disney Pike County Treasurer Frankie Stacy is applicant's agent for the Pike County Fiscal Court, the state and federal emergency management agency for DR 4595. Is there a motion to adopt by Commissioner Booth? A motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any questions, discussions? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes. Next item is approval of appointments to the Pike County Extension Board. It is my motion to nominate Kathy Harville and Jackie Charles. They are both already on the board, and their terms will begin on January 1st, 2022 and expire December 31st, 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other questions, discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes. Yes. Next matter is the approval to pay Nate Reed, Pike County Trails Land Agent for a lease with Toby Compton, Angela Smith-Compton, revocable trust authorization to issue a check in the amount of $500 to be paid from, be paid by the county with reimbursement from the coal severance tax funds that have been approved for the trail development, is their motion? Motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any questions, discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes. All right, next matter is acknowledgement received of Pike County Conservation District tax rate of .800 cents per $100 assessed value on real property, personal property, you know, motor vehicle and water craft. Jeanne, I think that's unchanged, isn't it? That has not changed. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other questions, discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes. Yes. Next item is acknowledgement received of Pike County Extension Board 2021 tax rates of 3.87 cents per $100 assessed value on real property, 4.55 cents per $100 assessed value on personal property, and 1.4 cents per $100 assessed value on motor vehicles and water craft. I think that is also unchanged, is that correct, Jeanne? Is there a motion to acknowledge?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any questions, discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes. Yes. Next item is acknowledgement received of Pike County Schools 2021 tax rates, the same as last year, 88.7 cents per $100 assessed value on real property, personal property, motor vehicles and water craft. Is there a motion to acknowledge?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other questions, discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes. Yes. Next item is acknowledgement of receipt of the Pike County Independent Schools 2021 tax rates, which is the same as last year, at 74.7 cents per $100 assessed value on real property, personal property, motor vehicles and water craft. Is there a motion to acknowledge?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other questions, discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes. Yes. Next item is authorization to place all tax rates on one court order.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other questions, discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes. Yes. Mr. Fann, anything from the bid office? Mr. Little, anything, sir? Do we have, we don't have a? Is it? Hang on a second here. Come on up. You have some information to share with the taxpayers and some good news and some information that I think the folks would like to hear. I think it shows what this court has done, particularly over the last three years in terms of taking care of the county's roads, that many ways have been neglected, and trying to create a resurfacing program that would address the long-term needs of the county. So you have the floor. I'm not sure if Pike TV has the copy of this.
They won't, but we will give it to them when we give, if you want, yeah.
Yeah, we could, we could do that and make it available, but you have the floor, sir, and you could update us on, on the resurfacing program.
Okay, so this is going to be for this, through this year, fiscal year, through 2020 to 2021, which would have started, you know, when we started Blacktop at the end of our fiscal year, we laid 11.24 mile. Then, starting in our fiscal year for our surplus money so far, we've laid 16.5 mile. And that's out of the surplus that you, that you and the court have gave. Then for our flex money, that would be our state contribution that they gave us. We, and this all now is up until yesterday afternoon. We've laid 8.53 mile. The coal severance drawdown money, we've laid 5.48 mile. The discretionary, we've laid 7.8. And then out of the road budget itself, we've laid 2.38, 2.39. So that would be a total of. So that would be a total of, so, so far this year, we've been able to put down fifty one point fifty nine mile, and which we will add another mile and a half of that by the end of today. We'll add another mile and a half to that. Uh, that's what we will finish today.
But before the end of this calendar year, how many miles do you think that we ended up, end up having paved this, uh?
It will be somewhere around sixty five, sixty, sixty five, sixty eight, somewhere now.
So Commissioner Booth, you worked for the road department for nearly thirty years. And Mr. Little, what's the most you all can recall seeing paved in a year?
Not near what we paved this year.
Honestly, it was nowhere close to this. Uh, I've never seen a court in the, like I said, you know, I'm, myself and Booth, we both had twenty seven years invested here before we came, came to this position, but, uh, I've never seen a, a court put down this much, be able to resurface this much, this much miles, this many miles of road.
In this fiscal year, I mean, this fiscal year, we're gonna be sixty five, seventy miles probably by the end of the fiscal year.
Correct, by the end of this, oh, yeah, you'll be, by the end of this fiscal year, yeah, you should be around seventy, up in the seventies.
And that's, that's remarkable, considering before we came in, they were probably paving ten, twelve.
So next week.
Ten, twelve miles a year.
You know, next week with the, with our main paver, we'll be doing, um, roughly three mile, uh. So we've got, we got three mile, and then we've got another, so, you know, just next week along with our big paver, we'll be putting down probably six mile, six mile next week, you know, with, if the weather holds out. But, yeah, we, we're, uh, we've, the crews have actually done, I can't brag on them enough, I know every, they may get tired of this, uh, but, seeing these guys are, are really coming together and we're, we're laying some good blacktop.
I mean, if.
Just like the other day, I was coming down Kaney, it pouring the rain, and these boys out putting that blacktop down.
It is, they.
But let me point something out, too. We're, because we're doing it in-house, we're saving over six thousand dollars a mile. That saved the county at fifty one, to do fifty one point six miles, you're talking saving over three hundred thousand dollars by doing it in-house.
And that's money that we get to put back toward more resurfacing. Now, and honestly, I think that's a big reason of why we're able to see these numbers is because we are doing it in-house, other than, you know, rather than contracting it out. Because we get to, you know, we get to put that money that we save right back into resurfacing, more roads, more mileage.
That's what we decided, I mean, we've paid, we, we have paved enough in-house to pay for the paving machine that we bought.
Absolutely have, yes.
And.
Two years.
And that ought to be, that paver ought to be good for another fifteen or twenty years if it's taken care of, long after, long after I'm gone, so. All right. All right, we have the Pike County Commissioners, um, the Pike County Road Department's completed work orders and the county commissioners' scheduled work orders in the packet. Uh, are there any additions, modifications, or corrections that need to be made by the commissioners prior to acting on this list? Is there a motion to authorize the, uh, completed work orders and the scheduled work orders as set forth in the, uh, packet?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other questions, discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Stacy, you have some good news for us from the treasurer's office, I believe. Thought you wanted, I thought you wanted to talk about what you prepared for us from the, uh, on the coal severance tax. Do you want to give us an update on that?
I didn't bring that paper with me, but, uh.
You want me to do it?
Well, uh.
Here, I'll give it to you.
So far, so far through two quarters, I mean, just from memory, so far through two quarters, we've reached our budget of what we had for coal and mineral severance, and we've actually exceeded it by, uh, eighty nine thousand dollars so far through two quarters. So coal is way up, and then minerals hold them steady with what we budgeted.
You know, just historically, two thousand twelve, the county collected twelve point four million, two years ago, and that's coal and mineral. Two years ago, we collected one point four, last year was one point one, I believe, and then this year we budgeted seven hundred thousand because we had seen just year after year of decline. So this is the first bright spot that we've had with coal and mineral severance since sometime. It does give us hope that, uh, that we can see, and of course, uh, coal prices are up with both met coal and steam coal, and, uh, let's hope that, uh, that continues. But, um, thanks for putting that together. I think all the members have that, just to update them on it. So if anybody'd like to comment on that?
Well, I mean, you can notice by the roads, we're seeing a little more coal hauls, so I, I think it's gonna continue to go up. I, I mean, that's my opinion, it's not ever gonna be like it was before, but every little bit helps this fiscal court to help the citizens of this county. I'm picking the death of that newsreel.
Anybody else? You get, just pick on me, Brian, I appreciate that. Greg sees the, sees the other trucks available, because he's never gonna let me live it down if we don't. We don't have anything to come in terms of personnel, is that correct, Justin? All right, department supervisors, anything from, Eric, department supervisors? Anything from Ms. Thacker, Ms. Skaggs, Ms. Fannin, Ms. Goff, anything? Mr. Jackson? Anything from Sharon or Eric? Mr. Williamson, anything from Public Works? Mr. Spears, anything from Safety Office? Anything from Blood Plane Office? Mr. Kaiser?
They have got the study done at Penny, and they found some crayfish, but we'll mitigate the plan and get through it, it's moving right along.
So people will understand.
It's, it's a happening.
So we were able, in large part due to Commissioner Tackett, to get three hundred fifty thousand dollars to replace a bridge that is in dire need of replacement, but unfortunately, the federal government makes us do a, uh, environmental impact study, and we have some crawfish that we have to make sure, uh, are not impacted. So we spent twenty thousand dollars to do that.
Sorry to say.
Government efficiency at its finest. So now how are we gonna protect the crawdads?
That's, we're working on that.
But we, I'm just trying to figure out.
There's, there's a plan, there's always a plan, so it's in the process, so we don't have to. Longer till we'll be, we'll be done with this.
Well, we don't have to relocate. I mean, you know, you know what would happen if this were Louisiana, right? So, Mr. Kaiser, we're gonna designate him him as our crawdad expert.
You said, Jimmy, we gotta relocate those crawdads?
We could put them up for adoption.
It's been a long time waiting on this.
It's crazy, but we just want the public up there, the folks that, we, we, obviously we want the, the folks that live on Penny Bottom to know that we're moving with this as fast as we can, but there are regulatory hurdles that we have to jump through because this involves putting equipment into a creek or stream and altering the creek or stream, and the federal government is pretty, you know, there's just requirements that we have to jump through, otherwise we would have already been under construction. Um, Mr. Little, anything? Mr. Mayor? All right, anything from the Assistant County Attorney? Anything from the county attorney? Um, Judge Hickman, any comments? We're gonna start, uh, in terms of seniority with, uh, Commissioner Ronnie Robertson.
Is that on age? Is that on age, Judge?
We went on age.
I was, I, I wanna thank the guys that's putting the blacktop down, they're doing a heck of a job. Fabian's guiding that way, and, uh, I'm just, you know, the other day, when I come down Kaney, I seen it pouring the rain and all that blacktop and those trucks, I said, Lord, what's them boys gonna do? They went right through it, put that blacktop down, stayed soaking wet all day, I just wanna thank them for that. You're next, Elvis Brian.
We're gonna, we're gonna go to Commissioner Booth next.
I, Judge, I just wanna thank our employees, they are doing a good job, and I just hope everybody had a good trick or treat last night. It seemed like the, uh, when I was out last night with the granddaughter, the kids and adults both seemed like they really enjoyed herself, it was good to see people out again and not, you know, I know we still gotta worry about the pandemic, but it was good to see all the kids out with each other and the parents out with them, that's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Tackett?
I, I just repeat what these guys said, I mean, it's, it's just the way our employees are moving across this county and Fabian there with them, I mean, it's, they're, they're doing a great job, from the road department, solid waste, down to, back to the office, back to here, and I'm gonna thank them. And like Brian said, uh, last night, we went to the door and handed out candy, and I know things are not back to normal, and we probably got a while before it's gonna back to normal, but it was just good to see the kids and the families out enjoying themselves, and, you know, we've had some communications up there with a lot of people, and, you know, they're, they're like we are, just, we still have no answer to what we, what all that needs to be done, but it was just a great time to knit miller this morning, just, you know, I was up there early giving out some candy, and, uh, I had to come back and report me and I couldn't go to Elkhorn, so, but, uh, I just wanna thank them. I'm gonna do it to schools too.
I, I do wanna say one more thing, uh, thank you, Judge, for letting us buy the four Peterbilt trucks. If we'd have had two.
I didn't let you buy them, you might.
If we'd have had the other two that was busting our budget, uh, but, you know, thank God that we got those trucks for Fabian, it's helping getting that blacktop down.
So.
Yeah, but I wish we'd have got two more, but.
You know what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna wear, I'm gonna wear my Peterbilt cap that you bought me in here one day, okay?
I'm gonna wear yours and I'll wear mine.
I've got you, uh, I got you a belt buckle order.
Yeah.
You're picking on me, guys.
But, uh, no, another thing, is, did we get the bucket truck fixed? Does anybody?
You wanna buy one of those too?
No, I, I've just got, I've got one of the trees. I've got some trees, I need, bury.
The large bucket truck is running in a while.
It is, okay. I'll get with you Fabian sometime today. All right.
Uh, just, just my commentary briefly, I wanna just, uh, two things, uh, Tim Crawford, who is a retired county solid waste employee, he's been battling cancer, we wanna ask everybody to remember Tim in their prayers, and then, uh, Jeff Justice, J.J. from the garage, has been under the weather, um, I saw Connie had posted that he'd been sick, and, you know, J.J. does a great job for us, he's a good friend, him and Connie, and just ask, um, that he be remembered in everyone's prayers, too. We've had, uh, you know, uh, there's a lot of sick people in the county, there's a lot of people who are, you know, have still been battling COVID, and, um, the health department's done a remarkable job of trying to educate the public. It's been a tough two years, I mean, we've had to deal with a lot of things that none of us anticipated when we came in. We've made a lot of progress, the, you know, we, we heard the, the update a couple weeks ago on the landfill expansion, we're making remarkable progress on this trail system. Uh, Wednesday, I spent an entire afternoon with Commissioner Tackett in, uh, Pond Creek, uh, with Judge Hickman, we were over meeting with, uh, a business, a local business owner who is looking at a substantial investment in a facility, uh, that would provide both facilities for corporate retreats, some of the facilities are already there. Uh, and, um, we, they're looking at building approximately forty cabins, um, potentially restaurant, potentially related to a distillery facility, and, uh, you know, I, there are some business folks that I, that I have a lot of respect for, when you listen to them, and I don't wanna mention their names because they didn't really want me to do that, but a local business owner who's been remarkably successful, but it's good to see that people from here who have done well are willing to invest here, not just to take their money to Tennessee or to Lexington, but they're wanting to put money back into the community. And this person said to me, you're on the right track, you're onto something big, that's what they told us, and Jason will bear that out, he said, you're onto something big with the trail system. And I'll be, I, there have been times I have been skeptical, but I had to go to Lexington last week, and I was in a community in Lexington, it's an industrial area, and there were two pickup trucks at different locations with razors on them, covered in mud, so I've been up, they've been riding trails somewhere. And when you look at the amount of, of people who went into the, uh, trailhead over at Grundy for that, uh, festival they had over there, the Spearhead Trails, uh, the day we were over there with Commissioner Tackett and, I can't remember, was it Judge Hickman and Sharon went over with us, were you over there with us at Grundy? I can't remember who was over with us in Grundy, somebody else went over with us that day, but, you know, people were coming in from South Carolina, Georgia, you know, expensive motor homes, uh, McCoy Motorsports, uh, you know, they had a booth set up over there, local businesses making money, putting people to work. But what they've done at the Spearhead Trail, and we wanna work with them to try to connect the two trails, we could have as many miles of trails in the property we already have at the Flatwoods, the property we've acquired from Big Sandy, as they have in the entire Spearhead Trail system. I think that's a fair statement. And, uh, I wanna commend, um, obviously, the Trail Advisory Board is in the process of, uh, of interviewing individuals for the Trail Director, uh, that's an important position so that we can try to get these leases done. We just approved another lease today, we've had some productive conversations with Kentucky Berwin Land Company that I've gotta get with County Attorney, Assistant County Attorney on this week, uh, coming to try to, uh, to get some information back to them. Uh, but we've got a lot of support from landowners, a lot of support from coal companies, uh, who have a lot of surface land that has been mined with not a lot of post-mining uses for it, but we're gonna create an opportunity for these companies to have some developments, um, to, and, and, you know, uh, if you look at the amount of people that have come into to West Virginia on the Happy McCoy Trail, we can surpass that, what they're doing with the entire trail system, and the entire Happy McCoy Trail system, we can surpass that right here in Pike County alone. It's a slow process, but just so the public understands, we have acquired twenty six hundred acres for, you know, next to nothing, that the county could sell today and make money on, or timber and get their money back. County will never lose a penny on it. We've got, I'm not sure how many total acres are in the Big Sandy lease, but is that around?
It's all the yield, Judge, I think, what the county owns, and we have leased for forty years.
Yeah, and not count some of these smaller tracks, but already sixty six hundred acres. And, uh, you know, but it's gonna take private investment, we are working, uh, on a large grant application with Economic Development Administration in Atlanta, uh, that will be, uh, three million dollars plus, and we, we're optimistic about that, because if you remember, we just, that same agency just gave us about one point nine million for our industrial site at Wolf pit. So we're looking to maximize all of our resources, state, federal, and local, and we've had some, you know, Sharon's had some good conversations with the EDA, and, uh, we're gonna have to commit some more of our, potentially some more of the ARP money to that project, or look to do some type of bond issue, but, uh, we believe if we can get that grant, this thing will take off pretty quickly, it'll help us get the infrastructure in place, and, uh, we just need to make sure we get that done as quick as possible.
Judge, I.
Yes, uh, Judge, in addition to that, we're going through a procurement, uh, process based on KRS regulations for sponsorships for the trail as well, and I don't know, uh, Commissioner Tackett and Commissioner Robertson, they wanna address that, but in the last meeting this week, that process is getting started as well to procure sponsorships. You guys wanna say anything about that?
Well, I think Jason and I have been approached, some people wanna invest in, well, I'm not gonna say invest, they're wanting to sponsor a certain trail that we've got marked up there or whatever, now we know we are allowed to do that, we gotta do it in the right order, but that would help us, like, signage up, picnic tables, picnic shelters, and things like that.
Garbage, garbage, garbage bins and, uh, that'd help promote the.
Garbage, garbage, garbage bins and uh, it'd help promote the, the trails too, you know, and I think one of the ways we kind of talked about it was uh maybe let like whatever wants to, you know, sponsor the three, four people or whatever co-company that lands on that's give us the villages to uh get a trail started, was put their name like at the top as a donation, like with the land, and then uh, then if companies throughout the county want to put their name on there, you know, so we're working, we're working, starting Wednesday, we're ready to put it in play to uh, to get everything, make sure it goes the right, the, the legal way to uh, to do that. And I, I do wanna thank all the volunteers that helped us do what we have done, if there, we do have temporary signs on some trails already, more, that people, well, I know they're using, you know, you see them up there every weekend, every day, so um... And not throwing wood on the fire or anything like that, I had somebody ask me the other day, said uh, with uh, all the money that you're spending up there, I was thinking, we, we started with two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand, I think, Judge, I think we're still two fifty, and we're still over a hundred thousand of that we've still got, so... So I meant, you know, and then plus the, the uh, the people that have just come up there and helped us, you know, I mean, when we had a cleanup, the first cleanup we had was, I think, thirty-eight hundred pound of garbage we picked up. We had one here about a month ago, and it may have been three hundred pound of garbage, I don't, I don't want Chuck got to, to weight off of that, but you know, you could have hauled it all in the back of the pickup truck. And then Judge was asked the other day while we've been working on the pigeon side, we're coming to the pigeon side. Every day. Be patient with us, we'll be able to come before you know it, cleaning that entrance up and getting it cleaned up where, you know, we can have camping in there or whatever. Doing one thing at a time, the way we can get it done.
Uh, I just had a message uh that Kevin gave me uh just briefly, um... Ramsey Creek Fire Chief Robert Kendrick and his wife Linda that went to high school with uh Fabian and myself, Cog, uh they lost their, their twenty-month-old grandbaby yesterday, and I don't know for the circumstances why it happened. Robert and Linda are very close, personal friends of mine, and uh I just wanna extend my condolences and on behalf of the court, extend condolences and ask again that uh that they be remembered in their prayers, that's just something that no one, no parent or grandparent could, could imagine, and uh, but anyway, um, with that being said, I'm gonna, if there's any other business to come before the court, uh if there's not, then I'm gonna ask for um Mr. Spears, if he will come up and do the benediction for us, and then we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Let's pray. Father God, we come to you, Lord, uh, thank me for the decisions made here today, and we, we pray uh your guidance, your blessing on these decisions, or we also pray that you would send a comforter to the Crawford, uh, Mr. Crawford and Mr. Justice, and Lord, a special comfort to the, to the Kendrick family that's lost a grandchild. We ask all these things, and your blessings on this county, and we ask it out in the precious name of Jesus Christ, Lord, and say, me.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. We are adjourned.